Thanks Jackie, and again it's August 3rd at eighteen oh one here in Oak Ridge City Hall for a regular session. Jackie, would you call the roll please?
Yes. Sorry, Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Charman.
Here.
Counselor Hooker.
Jackie, yeah, she's she's no longer a counselor.
Okay. Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
Mayor Ketchum.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks Jackie, thanks very much. Okay, number four is additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda. Any counselors have any adjustments?
I wanted to remove from the consent agenda the minutes for June fifteen.
Okay, and we'll move those down to item thirteen. Anyone else for changes to the agenda? I have one, we're gonna add item ten point seven, which is appoint Chief Kevin Martin, Pro TMC A from August fourth through the seventh in the absence of James. That'll be ten point seven. All right, now we're down to public comment. I'll go to the Zoom platform first. Is there anyone on the Zoom platform with a public comment? Nothing heard in the room? Is there a public comment, Ms. Hammond?
It's my fingertips over my teeth. Thank you. So thank you for this opportunity to comment. Oh, Trudy Hammond, seventy-six, three-four-nine, planned away. Um, thank you for the opportunity to comment about the safety. For the communities of Oak Ridge and Westford means so much to me that this twenty nineteen, I became a member of the Public Safety Committee. Animals mean so much to me that I didn't, that I formed a nonprofit, Safe Animals, and are every began free services for the communities. Financing of bed expenses, waiving adoption fees, and providing pet food for the low income. Glad to report that ninety-eight percent of the rescue dogs have been adopted. With this program, I am asking for more support from local law enforcement and asking that the contract with Oak Ridge Food Company in the city of Westford be reviewed by council. And the administration community to define services as long for crimes against animals. I'm not asking for officers to become dog catchers. I'm asking for the laws regarding the O R S, section one-six-seven-point-three-one-five and other statutes that are the Oregon statute laws to protect animals such as O R S, section one-three-one-point-eight-zero-five law enforcement policies. Many people need the city ordinances to be enforced under state law. There's a contract that exists between the Oak Ridge community and Westford with these expectations for where tax dollars paid. Or then it's nine-two-six, the violence class violations, and there are consequences for violations. They pay a friend who just, you know, on page twenty-two in the section five-point-one penalties. And fines applicable under two-point-one, including non-criminal offenses of consequence in three-point-one section, the three-point-one. Section under emergency states, and I quote, "The passage of this ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of each health and safety of the city. And an emergency is hereby declared to exist. This ordinance shall be in full course and effect immediately upon its passage by council." And that was September eighteen seventeen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room with comments? Anyone else on the Zoom platform with comments? See none, we'll move on. To mayor comments, announcements, proclamations. Couple here. Don't forget Farmer's Market, that's every Friday from three to five, and tomorrow is first Friday art walk. So encourage you to get out there, and that starts at five to seven right here on First Street. So I encourage you to come on out. It should be a good time. There's a lot going on this weekend, so I'm sure it'll be nicely crowded. Next is to announce, remind everybody, Oak Ridge Kegging Cast Festival is August twelfth, Saturday. From three to eleven right here on First Street, and they'll close off a couple of blocks and have some music and refreshments. So please come on out, and do you know if they still need volunteers, fans?
Yes, I can have any Italian.
Yeah, yeah, please volunteer if you can. Maybe all sorts of stuff you can do. And we also have the Oak Ridge Triple Summit Challenge Foot Race this weekend at Green Waters Park in Westford. So it'll be some, a lot of folks in town. Lastly, I want to welcome Representative Charlie Conrad with us. He's the District Twelve representative, which includes east, most of East Lane County, or all of East Lane County, including us. So he'll be somewhat down the agenda with a Q and A and probably some opening remarks. So we're looking forward to that. That's all I have. We'll go to council comments or announcements. Anyone on the Zoom, counselors on the Zoom, do you have any?
Nothing from me.
Nothing for me as well.
Thank you. In the room?
I would like to request a city administrator meet with Trudy Hammond, and we put this on the next meeting's agenda to discuss. What we can, what we can do and just open it for discussion and see what your recommendations are. And I'm happy to help if you need a counselor, but I imagine you don't.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. So item eight, it's a consent agenda, and in this case, it's gonna be minutes from previous city council meeting that occurred on seven thirteen. Seven thirteen-twenty-three revised seven thirty-one twenty-three. Where's that? Oh, there's only one set of minutes, right? Okay, so we're gonna just skip right over that, because it's gonna be on item thirteen.
Well, no, no, sorry, the seven thirteen ones still on the consensus, I don't think there's any issues that I can page.
Okay, that's what I thought. So right now, the consent agenda is the minutes for seven thirteen twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I moved the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Hollitt. Any opposed? Okay, motion passed unanimously. Item nine, appointments, nine point one, WAC Subcommittee, Mr. Jeffrey Reed. James, you wanna introduce this?
Jeffrey, you would like to be on the WAC Subcommittee. He's got a background in instruction. So you're a model in the WAC, very helpful. If anybody has any questions for him.
Um, we have, let's take a motion first.
I move we appoint Jeffrey Reed to the WAC Advisory Subcommittee.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Counselor Hollitt, seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Sorry about the counselor online, we didn't get there in time. Discussion or questions of Mr. Reed? Anyone? I have one. Yes, sir, you were, I know you had to leave Planning Commission because of time commitments or whatever it was. Just wondering, has life changed, or you can, you can contribute some more time now?
Oh, yeah, with the, it was me, you just, um. Yeah, I haven't.
That's fine, that was, that was.
I went on another committee, it didn't fit me well.
Okay, understand.
I really, I just.
Yeah, look at your background, I think it's, it's a, it's a great background, and you'd probably be a great fit for the, for the committee.
But you're fifty-six years, went to grade school there, like to see it thrive.
Great, great, thank you very much. Any other questions to read? Uncle? All right. So the motion was to appoint Jeff Reed to the WAC Advisory Subcommittee. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Charman.
I.
Counselor Hollitt.
I.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome aboard. Moving on to item nine point two. That's council representative appointments to three committees, James.
Right, so with the unfortunate departure of Counselor Hooker. That three, the need of appointments officially from councils and council representatives. The library board. Special Fire District and WAC Advisory Subcommittee. It's a little special because Council Pollin is on two of those subcommittees. Of course, we can have up to three. Councillors on, not creating forum. So. Thank you, I say forum. Forum. To my recommendation, we simply pointed to those two. Obviously, after council, we have the ever-popular library board. Well.
Well. Yes, Counselor Kenyon.
I was gonna make a motion.
Please.
I move that we appoint Counselor Pollitt to the Special Fire District Subcommittee and the WAC Subcommittee.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion made by Counselor Kenyon, seconded by Counselor Coker. Discussion.
Ask for Hollitt, do you, um, would you like to be the council representative?
Absolutely. Yes, me.
Sure.
Nancy.
Please.
Um, so I was part in forming the, in both of those two committees. The WAC one was myself and Counselor Bobby Whitney, who is still a citizen on that committee. I'm very involved in both of them, and I would like to be the, one of the counselors on there. I do think it would be advantageous to this group to have another counselor on the WAC committee. Um, at least one. As far as the special district, we are kind of wrapping that up, or a feasibility study, so there's only probably a couple of meetings left on that one, but. Yeah.
Thank you. Any comments for? I'd like to, let's see. What we'll do is, the motion was to appoint Counselor Hollitt to the Special Fire District and WAC Advisory Subcommittee as the city council representative. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yeah. Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Counselor Hollitt.
I.
Counselor Charman.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Mayor Ketchum.
I. Thanks Jackie, motion passed unanimously. I have an additional motion, and that is to postpone the selection of the library board and the other, perhaps a second counselor to the WAC Advisory Subcommittee until after the new counselor is appointed.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, motion made by me, seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Any discussion? Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I'm really sorry about my phone, I don't know how to shut off that volume. Um. I wanted to mention that I'd be happy to fill in if there's any meetings between now and when we get a someone appointed. There were a few times I've already filled in when Jen couldn't be there. I'd be happy to continue doing one.
Except, the next day is in September, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we, if we can stay on schedule, appointed a council person in September, then we should be, okay.
Great, thank you for that. Any other discussion? All right, the motion was to postpone the appointment of the counselor to the library board and the WAC Advisory Subcommittee until after the new city council person has been appointed. Yeah, could you go for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Hollitt.
I.
Counselor Charman.
I.
Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Mayor Ketchum.
I. Thank you, motion passed unanimously. With that, we're on to item ten, ten point one, which is the question and answer period with State Representative Charlie Conrad. Charlie, do you wanna sit up here? Do you wanna spin a chair around? Do you wanna stand up? We're happy to have you.
Is the podium the best spot?
If you, if you don't mind standing. Great, that'd be great, yeah, just. And I don't know, do you have open remarks, or do you wanna just go right into a Q and A?
I'm more than happy to start off with a few remarks, just based on a couple of things. First off, I appreciate you for putting me on the agenda, letting me come here and be the host of the city of Oak Ridge. Again, Charlie Conrad, House Representative for District Twelve. For those that might not know geographically, it's from the lane that this war is a restful cottage road all the way up Junction City. Little bit north in Lynn County, not much, not Harrisburg, and then further away, here is, so. Large area, that's also includes some of the south hills, a very diverse area, but mainly rural areas. And, you know, with that, you know, some of what my goals are as a representative are to really represent rural districts. My background with a lot of cities, I've lived in Dexter for twenty-plus years, so the rural parts of Lynn County are really a part of who I am, you know, of being able to represent them. Being a freshman legislator, there are a lot of new experiences, a lot of things that happened up at the legislature, which were, you know, it really was an experience of a lifetime, lifetime, and, you know, being able to go through at least a long session. And going forward now that we're in the interim, and I'll touch base a little bit on that here in a minute about what my intent is at the interim. But in the long session, I was on a couple committees, we're on one, three committees, I was on the judiciary committee, the behavioral and healthcare committee. And then the emergency management, general government veterans committee. So all three of those committees really are ways that I can help and impact this district and people that live here, which is really why I ran. Um, in each of those committees, we did some good things, passed some good bills, that's good legislation coming out. Some things that I'm very excited about, on the shore side, we passed some bills that really tightened up some of the sections that we had. We had a lot of discussions about workforce, discussions about workforce with district attorney, the public defenders. In ways that we can try to solve that. And then that behavioral health and healthcare committee, there's a lot going on statewide, and that touches on just about all of our lives in one way or the other. And we need a lot of work in that sector, behavioral health and healthcare really is broken in Oregon, and so one of the things I'm trying to focus on, I am focusing on in the interim. Understanding better how we operate here in Lynn County, and then how can I help out at that state level, particularly with, so it's useful for treatment for youth. You know, to me, we've got a lot of issues going on with behavioral health, yes, immediate needs, but also how do we help out in the future? You guys really contacting and helping review about so that they don't tread that same path. In the other committee that is on emergency management, that's a general government, a large, large swath of everything, maybe emergency management. Everything wildfire, which particularly for us in our district, is everything that we're going through right now. General government, a lot of various different things going forward, general government, we don't with hers, we don't with treasury, we don't with number of different, state level. And then veterans, you know, really having to help veterans, both veterans that are having housing issues, veterans that have mental health issues. And veterans that, you know, are returning, that help will help get them some better opportunities for education and training. So all those kinds of things really impact this district, and grateful to be able to work on some of that. Before this meeting, I was able to have a chance to meet one-on-one with Counselor Harmon, had some good conversations about some of the issues with Highway fifty-eight and some things going forward, perhaps what we can do. When, when I've been told at this point in time is at that long session, eighty-twenty-five, so at the legislature, we have long sessions and the odd year, short sessions and the even year. There's gonna be a transportation session, so whatever we can do to help out and get some plans going, some ideas going forward, so that we're able to put something forward in that long session, which is funding for whatever we might need at state level. That we've got it, and then we can go ahead at that point in time. I also had a chance to meet with Mayor and Counselor Hollitt and Counselor Kenyon, we talked quite a bit about public safety issues, some of the crimes, some of the things that go on with early release from the jail, or not being able to arrest and hold people at the jail. Talked about, you know, some of the, again, workforce issues that we had throughout the state, why, in that whole economic area. In industry, they're not a sector that isn't having workforce issues, and it's also for that healthcare side of things as well. So we're able to talk about a number of different things, including emergency services here provided by the city and areas around the city. So I appreciate those conversations for the counselors online that I did get a chance to be in, and I'll let you know that I am successful and available. And I'm happy to have one-on-one conversations with, with you or whoever you wanna have conversations with, just please reach out to me, let me know, and I have a scheduling time to, to have those. And my, my last bit of, of opening comments, just wanna give people a perspective of the workload that long session. To get a sense of, of what it's like, because I talk a lot about the work that we do, but sometimes it's difficult for that perspective. So these are my numbers, so the word approximate, yeah, it's in front of all of them, they're unofficial. But between both chambers, from both the House and the Senate, there were two thousand nine hundred and seventy measures that were introduced, but those resolutions and memorials. Seven hundred and seventy-five bills came to the floor for a vote, and that took some, very, seven hundred and seventy-five, we had to hit the red, the green button. That's all we could do, you know, it's hit yes or no, you can't abstain from a vote. And six hundred and sixteen measure passed, so change, and if you saw the paper recently, there's some things that the governor might add, and videos of capital, infrastructure projects, and a couple pieces of legislation, but for the most part, I think she's signing all the bills and everything that we pass, so that's why I did it work on three thousand pieces of legislation between the House and the Senate that were introduced. This session, a couple of the highlights for me, one of the highlights was, we get a chance and opportunity to put in capital and project funds. I put out a request for the city of Lowell, where there was water treatment plant, that got approved, I'm very excited about that. And then also Rattle River Fire Response, some folks down there are trying to get money, put it together by district. And I was able to get some money for them, for some trainings and equipment, so this fire season, so excited for those, those two wins. The one project that I put in for up here that didn't get funded, and I'm really disappointed, because I figured of all the projects I put in, it would be the, put in three and a half million dollar request for the Oak Ridge Airport to fix the runway, and I, unfortunately, that didn't get funded. So working with Oregon Department of Aviation, figuring out, and having to go forward, you know, having to get that runway funded, particularly in wildfire season. One of the bills that I sponsored that got passed, so it's my first one to get signed by the governor, which I'm very excited for. It is simply, it's called the innocent purchaser bill. And what it was, there's some property owners in Marcola that purchased property that had been fraudulently divided by a land use attorney. The county didn't catch on right away, they took some subsequent land actions. And then a few years later, they figured out these aren't valid property laws, and they weren't gonna make them legal laws, so they, so passed legislation, forcing them to make legal laws, now the property owners are able to use the property that they bought for the person they bought it for. So for me, that's big, because that's why I'm here, you know, giving to the government, and it takes me passing or helping to pass legislation so that you can use your property and bought for. Perfect, and that's one of your, so that was the first one, that's my first win in terms of a bill with my name on it. There's some other ones that I signed on to, the healthcare sector, pick this industry bills, one that I'm very excited about, that helps out children who have that hearing loss, they get hopefully their implants funded. So that's another bill that I'm excited about, including, that's helping out community, helping with those folks, and some assistance, so with that, that's, that's my introductory. And happy to answer any questions or carry on any discussions that people have.
I'll, I'll kick to the counselors on the Zoom, since you didn't really have a chance to get face-to-face with your congressman, any, any questions for Charlie?
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate you coming to our town and meeting with everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions at this time, Charlie, but I will be reaching out to you. I'd like to meet with you face-to-face.
Anybody in the room have a question for Representative Conrad?
So I know one of this, this has nothing to do with me, I said. This, you represent, so one of the things that was asked, you, you pump her on, yes. Yes, it's, sorry. The thing is, the bit, if I remember right, that, I think that is, yes, that's. That's one of the ones that when I heard about that, that was being proposed for session, sorry, I, I moved up here in ninety-one, Oregon State. Military practice, I lived all over, but in four and four valleys, I didn't want that for thirty-plus years, been waiting for thirty-plus, I didn't find any here. Oh, man, that's one of those I'm most excited about, you know, it's one of those subtle ones, I love it. That's my feature, I've done it, like, hey, that's right, and they're like, yeah. And they are sure. Yeah, and then they go to the short, short window, all right, because that happens, that's possible, yes.
Yeah, I didn't hear what you said, what was the?
Okay, yes.
Wow. Did I mean thousands of people just lost their jobs?
No. There's some, yeah, and some of the, what we heard with that bill specifically, there were a lot of, again, workforce. There are a lot of gas stations, mainly up in the Portland metro area, but they've got those pumps anyway, they can't get people, man. They cannot find staff, yeah, so that creates a backlog of, of gas stations up there. So the bill enables up to fifty percent of the pumps to be self-serve, so they're always beautiful to serve. Okay, well, so it's not a hundred percent, there's one, one gas station that we passed special legislation for in Detroit. Just because of very, very deep circumstances, and it's time limited, that will be different, but for the rest of the state, and now, but instead of having a little on the coast, some different regulations on the east coast, on the east side of the state. It's a local regulation, it's our first state.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was curious as to, did you have a choice of those committees that you were on, or were they, was there kind of a, you will sit on this committee?
Some of those learning lessons, it's really interesting to get up there and figure out, you know, kind of the behind-the-scenes side of it. Speaker of the House has authority to do whatever he wants, or if you keep your, you're on the committee at his pleasure. Before session, he sits down with everybody, talks to them, gets a little bit of their background, get a little bit of their interests, and then, and chances, a little bit. And then he puts people on the committees that, you know, can meet all those needs, and some of it, the capital's still under construction, so there was some time and space constraints. They also had to balance those types of things as well, so I didn't, I got to have, I got to know what I was interested in. And just sharing the emergency management ones were ones I requested, I did specifically request behavioral health and healthcare. But I'm very excited, I got, that was, I don't have a background in that, and just the, that opened up a whole new world for me for, you know, what I can do, you know, how to help out, so.
Yeah, and at the time that you spent there in the session, how, how was your time allocated between committee, and how much time you were actually on the floor pushing buttons?
It varies, there are a number of different phases that you go through, the very beginning, so talk, so session started mid-January. In the first phase, mid-January to February, there's not a lot, there's a lot of legislation I haven't put through. So there was a process, a number of readings that bills have to go through, it's gotta go through committees, a lot of things that had to happen. So that first phase, informational meetings, particularly my class, we had twenty-one new House legislative, which is the biggest class in quite a while. It's a lot of information, hearings, getting us used to it, for me, I spent a lot of that time getting, you know, lobbyists, getting new industries, reaching out to people in the district. And then as we got going forward, my committees, I had on the three committees, I had judiciary, four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, there's no session on Friday. I had healthcare three days a week, and then emergency management, two days a week, each one of those is an hour and a half. And depending on the bill, depending on the things, we had several of those, particularly towards the end of session, evening session, so there are some days when I got eight or nine hours in committee, and then at the back end of session, there were days, if you guys watched the news, paid attention to some of the big bills that we had going through that were, were on the floor for eleven, twelve hours. Not always pushing buttons, but a lot of speeches, a lot of different procedural things, a lot of things that you go from the politics side. The policy side, but again, yeah, seven hundred and seventy-five measures that we didn't have to push it up, so that's, that's a lot, sometimes you go fight through it, sometimes not.
Great. Any other questions? Any other questions? James?
No, again, I just wanna echo councillors, and thank you for coming.
Yeah, my pleasure, I appreciate the welcome, I appreciate you guys' opportunity, one of the things that you wanted to send my appreciation for. It's for James Fung and Mayor as well, that session, there are a couple of times that I reached out to them, asking for their thoughts on legislation, how it impacts the city. They're very responsive to me, very helpful, so I appreciate you to vote for, for, willing to answer my, my questions and help me out.
And we, we still uh, get the newspaper in our house, and uh. Today, I'm working here about the governor, uh, spending the money on different areas. I don't really have a specific question for you, but I've got the two articles in there from the governor. And I don't understand the millions of dollars being spent when they ask questions. How it kind of gets to there, it's probably, I I can't explain exactly the article. Without it being in front of you to to read or point what, but. But it, when I read this stuff, and there are several million dollars being spent, questions you get asked. They just talk about uh, representatives or somebody up in Portland. Uh, ignoring the questions and and the money just each being spent, and it was. One on the top page that said that they were spending twenty-five hundred and sixty dollars. Per day. For kids. To live. And 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 for easy reference, it'd be to to pick up that paper, because that was a day to today's day, you know. And and read through it yourself, I I I just don't understand myself, you probably can't answer, because I don't think that was a good question for you, but. But the money is being thrown around, like, and and I just. When I read this, I think, is this what's going on today out, out there, outside the building, you know, I don't uh.
Yeah, I I I read the, I read papers every day, I did headlines, and I don't remember the articles that you. Was it a console, five fifty, a comic, or was it a different one, like, if you get?
That's one, it used to come from New York Dean.
Sorry, cigar.
It's right, it's not New York Dean, it's right, and what they showed, I think it's probably not, still or, or working, watching it.
So, yeah, I'll look at this, I don't remember those, but just kind of, I can touch on, I don't know, I don't much, so give you the death sign when it's gonna go away. Um, one of the observations that I have in the process. Particularly when it comes to the finance side. Is, you know, getting and and understanding the flow of money. And. Understanding the ways and means process, so you have policy committees with three AM on. Then you have ways and means, ways and means of the appropriation committee. Any, the ways and means, they have different subcommittees, so there's the, the human services subcommittee, which would cover Oregon Health Authority, Department of Services, those type of things. There's a public safety subcommittee, which again will be from the defense services, Department of uh, uh, justice. And then there's some other subcommittees as well, and so as money goes through that process. Policy committees pass the policy, and then if there's money attached to the policies, and it goes to the subcommittees, and then it goes. To the full ways and means, maybe then it gets voted on, then it goes to. The governor design. The reason why I bring that that process up is because it's a kind of a in-depth process, there are a lot of different filters in that. But one of the things coming on the policy side, I was on a ways and means subcommittee. For me, on the behavioral health and healthcare committee. The state agency that we heard most about was the Oregon Health Authority. And my impression of the Oregon Health Authority based off of all those various lobbyists, the interest groups. Individuals, people that I spoke to throughout the session, and I continue to talk to, um, and meet people throughout the district. The inefficiencies at that level, and there comes a time, in my opinion, that organizations are way too much. They're inefficient, they're built in efficiencies. And again, state and state agencies are still succumbing to the workforce issues that the rest of us have as well. But some of what also happens is. They also contribute to some of the issues, and specifically, one of the things in some of the meetings that I brought up earlier this evening. Talk about peer support and peer special, people that will help, uh, others that are pricing, and also have a little experience. Or we help the authority this registrations for some of those. But they are six to nine months long, so as a nonprofit can hire somebody that can help with substance usage over as a peer. Person, as a peer support specialist. But they're not getting registered by Oregon Health Authority for nine months, you've got an employee, somebody that can contribute, somebody that can do something. But because of the issue that Oregon Health Authority, you don't have somebody sitting there doing the work. And that creates inefficiencies throughout the system, so they they suffer from the problem, but because of that, they also contribute to. And so, uh, when we get to the money and the funding, there are so many different programs, so many different rabbit holes that go down. And it's difficult with an organization that large, that massive. To piecemeal each program part, and they get into the key performance indicators, all the metrics in age, how well do they do? What is the bank for the bucks, and the money that they're spending to the outcomes, is this the right place we should be getting money? And that's some of what my goal was in the beginning, was to get a better understanding of how that goes and how that unfolds. And to have that conversation, so, you know, when you ask the question, is this money being spent? Because that's a lot of money for most of us, I'm still. You know, the number of zero lines on the budget bill that you pass is enormous, I've never passed a bill that. When, you know, the the education, it was ten point two billion dollars. It's an enormous amount of money, and to be able to track each and every one of those programs, it takes a lot, and. It's a difficult thing, and so I appreciate your question, and hopefully one of these days I'll be able to give you a better answer, but. Undoubtedly, there are a lot of inefficiencies at the state level. There are a lot of good things that happen at the state level, and being the tease, those things apart, to make sure that we're investing. You're taxing them appropriately, so you use the services that you need or they're even need them, that your neighbor, you have someone they need them. But that the money that you need in your pocket, in your bank account, are theirs for you as well, and they're not going to something that's inefficient. So I know that's kind of a broad perspective, hopefully that, I don't know, I need to get a question on.
I read the articles, most of them, uh, the park were coming here, the numbers, I read it more than once, I, and I just wouldn't say this. And I know it is a long run out deal to direct money here, direct money here, and who's got the. And one here for this money, and all this back and forth, and I was, it's like. It's like they put that article under just for me, just wanted to read that, and I, I recently, I I'm not trying to overreact, it was like. Does this really happen today still, today, you know, I mean, several million dollars were just. Not just two or three minutes, several million dollars were going places. And it's like, and the people ask questions, and uh. They they ignore the the questions, no, and another day they reply. And they answer, and I never get, so I, I guess that's the way it is to the, I see, doesn't.
I appreciate that, I'll look at that, read that.
All right, well, you're welcome to stay, enjoy the festivities with us, or you're welcome to get on the road to Dexter.
You know, and go get on the road.
Thank you so much for coming out. All right. We're gonna go on to item ten point two, which is the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two auto report, and the. Twenty twenty-two SRE. And uh, sits here with auditor Rebecca Harder of Hanford and Associates, James?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, yes, so our fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two audit is, we finalized within the audit committee last week. Um, our. Auditor Rebecca Harder is online, and I think, recently, Hanford, uh, also online, we said, oh, you actually there too, so. Both of our auditors are available to answer any questions, if you might have. The uh, SRE forming statement of revenue expenditures from S B thousand state, uh, that's about today. Um, so the next steps are, we've got to come up with a corrective action plan for the. Two deficiencies that were noted, or expected. That has to be done, and I expect that to come out next week, it's gonna look very similar to the, to the city's response to the issues. At a time. Uh, so that'll be, I'm not, but generally, the news was good, uh, it was a clean image, and we positive. Um, issues to point out. If I, I'm doing the agenda bill, it's been, um. Tried to uh, improve our internal controls, that's around page forty-six. Catch our big, big reconciliations. That's noted for page forty-six, forty-seven, uh, do supplemental budgets when necessary. Forty-eight, and uh, strive to increase the general fund balance, not as much as we can over time. That's identified, page twenty-seven, twenty-eight, forty-eight. And to make sure we are properly noticing, um, the budget changes. I think this, I heard this, this one notification by a day. Um, so nothing too major, but ongoing problems that the city is facing, and we are addressing those issues. Um, they've now started on our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit. Which we are hoping will will actually be done on time by the end of this year. First, first time in many years for our cities, but we are catching up. Personally, I'm very happy with our new auditors. Really easy to work with and very thorough, so. Yeah, they are both available on line to answer any questions, and also has paper copies of the audit in the mailboxes, and while there. I closed the SRE one, which uh, it was found today.
All right, well, there's no motion with this, it's informational, but I'll open it up for questions of James or the auditor team. From anyone. Yeah, that's okay.
I have one, I I checked on, um, sorry, Teresa, this is for you or your partner. I checked on the um. Data Oregon Audit Report website where, um, people can look at our audits and saw that it wasn't. Our audit isn't actually posted there yet, my question is, is that something that the city? Turns in, or do you guys turn that in for us with the SRE? I think you might be muted. Hmm, can't hear you. Is there anything on our side that shows you?
No, it would have, there we go.
What was that?
Thought we heard you for a minute.
Should have a little muted icon.
Right, she's not muted.
Might need to change the microphone source.
But I can answer that question, uh, yes, the auditors have to file the SRE with copy of the audit.
Okay.
Uh, but because it was filed today, it probably just has the code up on the website. It's secretary of state, but didn't literally file anything.
Okay, so I guess, um, more specifically, I was just curious whether or not. Those were sent together or not, because this only mentions SRE, not that for audit.
Yeah, the audit.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question for the audit team?
Well, the only thing, because I, um, I ran about it, because I have no idea what it meant, but um, going concern. Um, so what exactly triggers that, I mean. What is the, what are the repercussions for going concern, it sounds like suggests that we have six. Six months working reserves to start each year. Is that, so if we get above six months, and then the going concern goes away?
For the going concern, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm working, okay, good, just just checking, um, so for the going concern, um. It doesn't necessarily have to be six months, it's just kind of, you know, best practices. So it'd be whatever, you know, you guys choose to set up as a reserve basis. And so it it's just kind of more of a combination of factors in there, and so. One of the reasons we were looking at is just because historically, over at least the last three or four years, the fund had just been. Low, or the money that was in there was all restricted, and so we're like, you know, having, having some kind of reserve would be great. And so, you know, just kind of showing that historically going forward would be, you know, kind of, kind of helps that go away.
Rebecca, a a follow-up question to that, and I I was reading that same section, and it talked about how. Over the past two years, the ending balance existed only of restricted funds. In other words, when you took the, at general monies, there was nothing left. Uh, in the, in the general fund, and to carry that forward, that that ending balance. Uh, last year, if it was zero, in in reality, if you divorce the restricted funds. It it, can you make the translation that somewhat that our beginning balance for this new fiscal year is zero, minus the restricted fund?
It's essentially, yes, minus the restricted fund, so all the funds that were available, so the ending fund balance and the general fund. If you look at the budget to actual statements, because those will show you the, just a plain cash basis for the bank. Um, essentially, you know, it'll, it'll mimic bank, maybe not a hundred, just because of accounting, but. Um, yes, all the money that was available in that fund was all the, um, ARPA money, so the federal grant money.
Yeah, and my concern is, we we build a budget with an assumption there's two hundred and eighty thousand dollar beginning balance, in reality, it's zero, so. That's what concerns me, is we're gonna probably have to go back and revise that budget that we passed, based on the.
The audit, yes, yeah, and and we would recommend, yeah, just going back and reevaluating. Um, that budget, just in case there was anything that needed to be adjusted going forward, oh yeah, sorry, I guess we are, we are in another fiscal year, so we're looking at. Um, you guys just started fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four, correct?
Right.
All right, yes.
Um, and and the only, the last question would be, it was talking there about. Um, how you handle the emergency services fund, it it's differently than what the way it was handled before, can you explain that just a little bit more?
Oh, certainly, um, so in your budget to actuals. Uh, at that level of statement, you'll see that emergency services is shown separately, and that's just per Oregon budget law, every. You know, how you guys present and separate out the budget, that's how the budget actuals will show funds. And then, as is general practice, funds will start rolling together for presentation on the basic financial statements, so that'd be like your balance sheet and item statement. And so for those items, um, in talking with Colleen. We decided to go ahead and move emergency services to present alongside and within the general fund.
Okay, thank you very much, did you have another question, councillor Kenyon?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, to kind of, um, back to what you were just talking about with beginning fund balances. Since the audit that she, they were working on, uh, ended fiscal year twenty-two. Are you referring to the beginning fund balances for twenty?
Yeah, the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-three budget, we're way off, which.
Isn't it true, though, that since that fiscal year has ended, we can't do a supplemental for that supplemental?
That's true, that's why I kind of caught myself at the end, I forgot you started the new.
Yeah, my my point was, it rolls to the next year, so. If the beginning fund balance is that far off in twenty-two, and it's gonna impact twenty-three, which would have impacted this new budget, so I. I do think we need to reevaluate all of our beginning balances.
Although, isn't it true, though, that, um, you guys worked closely with Colleen to get. The estimated beginning fund balance for this year, accurate, before we did our budget?
Well, we got the beginning fund balances after it. For last year, so you're reading, okay, so that'll kind of give us a. A number for this.
Okay, so that, so you think that the budget that just passed for the fiscal year that we're in right now. Has fairly accurate beginning fund balances?
I I believe so, and, well, I I think it will know more once this new budget. Right, Rebecca, once we get this new, uh, sorry, audit done. We'll have a lot clearer picture.
Okay. Okay, so maybe we should think about waiting for that before we decide whether or not any supplemental state be done.
Well, if we suddenly, I think our beginning balance for the general fund, the, on the twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four budget was somewhere around two hundred and eighty or something like that. That would have meant that the general fund had to operate at a, a uh, a surplus of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and I cannot believe that happened. Anyway, it's something we're gonna have to dig into, so. Any case, any other questions for the audit team?
Yeah, I have a couple, um. Well, actually, a couple of them were already answered. Well, actually, a couple of them were already answered, I think, for just a second. Can you explain a little bit? So you said that the emergency services, you're gonna move that into the general fund. Is that for? This this fiscal year that we're in right now or the next budget season? Maybe that's a question for you. Okay.
So that was just for presentation on the balance sheet and the income statement?
Okay.
Your budget to actuals will show it still separately. And so, and and that's pretty general, like most governments, they'll have the general fund will. As presented on the basic statements, not the budget actual, will include several other little funds rolled in together.
Okay, and so you feel pretty confident about the beginning fund balances for this audit? Is what you're saying?
For which which fiscal year?
This audit that you're submitting right now.
For fiscal year twenty twenty two. So for that year. You convert, so there were a couple of changes. We did an adjustment for your budget to actuals. So that the beginning cash balances would more closely match your bank beginning cash balances, because those statements should be more. Cash basis and presentation, and we found that they were very different. And so you'll see that on the financial statements, there's gonna be a prior period adjustment. And so that will make it match your statements per banner and. The L G I P.
Okay. Yes, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, last chance for questions. Well, Rebecca, I certainly appreciate the services you provided. It obviously is a much more speedy process than our previous auditor, and. Thanks for the hard work and looking forward to your next report.
Thank you, and we appreciate working with your team as well. Everyone was very helpful, and it was it was very nice working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Teresa. Sorry, we couldn't hear you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Finally got you.
I know, I just had to reset, so.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks.
All right, that brings us to ten point three. Resignation of Counselor Jan Hooker and new counselor application and appointment process, James.
Yes, so unfortunately, I was a hooker. There's a resignation effective the end of July. For family reasons, so we need to start the process to fill the seat. I have had a suggested posting and timeline. It's very similar to what we did last time. The only change I made was. Having a cover letter required, even optional. Last time everyone. Submitted one anyway, so just. Maybe we should require, I think it gives council in the public a little bit more. Knowledge ahead of time during the interviews. Where we're coming from. It's just nice to have somebody on paper.
Okay, thanks, James. So do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the proposed process timeline vacancy announcement to appoint new city councillor. Bill Councillor Jim.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Councilor Tarmann, seconded by Councilor Kenyon. Any discussion on the package or questions to James? On the Zoom? No, I don't see any in the room. All right, nothing heard. The motion was to approve the proposed process timeline and vacancy announcement. To appoint a new city councillor to fill Councillor Jan Hooker's vacancy. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yep, Mayor Cutchen.
Hi.
Councillor Tarmann.
Hi.
Councillor Coker.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Bjornson.
Hi.
Councillor Hollitt.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to ten point four. And that is asphalt pump track at the O I P proposal from Parks Committee. As Rick or you or both?
So Rick will be giving his verbal recommendation on this project. I'm scared of a bit of a friend or last meeting about what. Being requested by the. We'll share tonight to further explain. What they asked basically. For a bit, they're asking for up to nine thousand dollars in O I P funds. They were pleased to go with the study by their rent company. To plan the design, the asphalt contract. Or land, it's just a park which has already been designated a park. So again, this this is recommended by. Parks Committee. And we have that council allow. We can take some questions.
Yes, bringing the idea. You you mentioned Rick was, you want to wait until after the motion, or you want to? Is he ready to provide a recommendation?
He is ready. Think we can do the motion first and then.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve nine thousand dollars in O I P funds to use for feasibility study for a future asphalt pump track in the O I P.
Well, you're second. All right, motion made by Counselor Hollitt, seconded by Counselor Tarmann. You you guys, you actually have a presentation, Jason, or just questions?
I just wanted to, yeah, I definitely would like to say two words.
Please, yeah.
Well. Counselor Mayor. So basically, this proposal is too bold. We realized we haven't actually got. That that probably the first vote. And the second vote would be the nine thousand. So continue. So it would be important to get that initial nine thousand dollars to get that site plan. You know, they said he everything, got the solutions. It's then we'd actually have something to show for people for. That's why we see this. So. Yeah. And you started with that nine thousand dollars, it could be rendered from American company to help sort of buy it. If they out and sign for the contract. And it's.
I understand.
I think you did do a little bullet point thing where what would Art would do with their study there.
Yes, so that. All right, any questions of of Jason and team? I did have one. I I noticed on the the estimate from American Rent Company. There was some additional items that if we had, it was great. If we didn't, then they would add on and charge you more money. Do you know whether we have those items or?
Here, so.
Topography map was the kind of the the big one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which I think you might be able to.
Come up with, yeah, okay.
So I. Sorry to interrupt, but as far as the topography map, I I'm pretty comfortable that we could come up with that. As as long as a G I S map and not a engineered document, we we got that.
Okay, if there are no other questions to Jason, what I'll do is ask Rick to give his staff recommendation. If you're ready.
Sure, yes, absolutely. So first and foremost, I would definitely like to express my gratitude towards these two gentlemen. They have put in a lot of work. They have come to multiple parks and community services meetings. They have worked very well with us, and I can't express my gratitude enough. They are the the force behind this. With that being said, as we all know, the dollars from the O I P are to go back into the fund or back into the park. Another thing that we do know is that maybe cognizant of is without the sale property, without the. Income from the property of the sales, the fund is kind of endangered, is running in deficient and in the negative. But nonetheless, with what is in there. This proposal is about one percent of the what we what we believe our beginning fund balance is for the industrial park. I. I do think this is a a great opportunity for for Oak Ridge. Again, it is already a park. I would love to see development in it. I think that the the nine thousand dollar cost for this. Is if we're gonna get something nice out there to do, I think this is. A great step forward for that, and I wholeheartedly support this.
I mean, that's something, I.
Yes.
Something the contract does bother me, that it's the same. Initially, I thought it was up to nine thousand dollars. This was being from you. Contract is saying nine thousand dollars or three percent of the project, whichever is higher. And that they will charge us later. To make up the difference at a later date.
And that would be about twenty four to twenty seven thousand, and the cost of the project is what the estimate will be.
Yeah, that that's probably, they're they're gonna give us something. Yeah, give us the design and then come back to us a year later and say. Give us another fifteen thousand dollars for what we already gave you?
I think hopefully at that point, you would be raising the money for that. And if we need to, we can contact them and let them know that. Yeah. I do have this scenario.
Yeah.
Thing for.
And I would, my worry is that the way it's worded now, it says it's three percent of their estimates, so in a sense, essentially, they're creating their own estimate. So to me, it'd be three percent of what the actual project cost ended up being, but that's just me talking.
Hold up, I didn't understand it. I think what we would do with that is. We get something to write from them.
Clarify it, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
That's what can you?
I actually have quite a bit. That was actually a significant part of what I wanted to bring up. It raises the question as to whether or not. We would need to do an R F P for one thing, because it's nine thousand dollars goes under the. Required contract, twenty four thousand goes way over, so huge difference there. We can't just automatically assign a project to somebody without doing an R F P for that dollar amount. So. Also, I was concerned that there's no. I guess my biggest concern is I don't really feel like this. What's being proposed in this American Rent Company contract is actually a proposal for a feasibility study. I feel like it's a proposal for a for a contract, for a job. So it being presented as a feasibility study, I think is mis. Represented, whatever that falls appropriately there. I think that. I I did some research on feasibility studies and the typical. General rule for feasibility studies. Is that the cost for the study would be one percent of the total cost to build. And that's based on another website says. That feasibility studies are accurate within ten to fifteen percent of the cost, which is pretty good to hear. But that they range between a half percent and one and a half percent of the total cost to build. As far as the cost of doing the feasibility study, so. I think. If we want to have a feasibility study done, it's a good idea. But I don't think this contract is a feasibility study, so. Maybe we have to just go back to the drawing board and get some things worked out. I I I would I would rather say we should postpone or table this proposal.
Any other concerns? Well, there is a motion on the table that says to approve up to nine thousand dollars in O I P funds to be used for a feasibility study for a future. asphalt contracts made by Councillor Hollitt. If she wants to withdraw that, she may.
I would like to withdraw that motion.
Okay, are there any additional motions that we want to consider, perhaps? A motion that would support a the concept of investigating a. A pump track at the Oak Ridge Industrial Park, some of those lines, so they can sort of have a better, you know, better. Leg on fundraising and everything else. You know that we're behind it. Just gotta find a way we're gonna get there. I don't know if you're.
I think Counselor Kenyon brought up a really good point about the dollar amount, so maybe we need to be discussing an R F P. For the process, if we're already at the nine thousand mark here, it seems like likely it's gonna be above that.
I'll ask James. The.
Do you want me to put in the R F P with my workload, looking at three, four months?
But I'm, I guess my point is, is that nine thousand dollars is well below the threshold of requiring an R F P.
Isn't it thousand dollars?
Ten thousand, yeah, but. I I don't think it is necessary. I mean, I don't know what it takes to design a V M X drive, but I would hope it can be done. But maybe I'm.
This is an account, this is a contract to do the whole thing.
No, no, it's it's just the planning part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Just one thing that kind of came up discussing the project with urban rail lines was. A feasibility study and what it what they did, what the city would recommend, and it kind of came down to. Be excited, those guys, get them on site, get them on the ground, get reports from them. And communication with American company. Basically, their responses. Get this out to this.
Yeah.
I can communicate and you see if we can break that down into. A little more approachable, maybe like something more understandable, what exactly they're gonna do. Just get like them on site, get that. And like a feasibility study done, and then the contract, if that's separated, so you have a proper stage. And all that money up front.
Is your guys intent to have the city? Sort of administrate this 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 feasibility study, or are we gonna give you nine thousand and you guys are gonna administer?
You guys.
Okay.
That's an interesting point I want to bring up, thanks. Our city structure.
Sure, yeah.
In communications, it's always been. Nine thousand dollars for this, and then once we kind of got. Contract from them, we noticed the small print too, and. Yeah, had a little conversation, I understand the the trust.
Yep.
What you concerned me for, it's concerning to.
Yeah. That's okay, do you have more?
I do. So this document is something that sounds like maybe Jason, you and Linda and some other people. Put this together and the Parks Committee. Supported it to bring it to council. It talks about the asphalt pump proposal. With the goals and solutions, so. Down near the bottom, it says Velo Solutions would be contracted to build on the O I P site. Estimate of eight hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand includes the nine thousand dollar fee. For the initial rendering and contract. Timeframe from contract to completion is ten to twelve months, and the bill would take two to three months. So. That coming along with this makes me think that. The idea is being proposed that if we accept this contract, we're basically agreeing. To spend up to eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars to.
They wouldn't, yeah, they wouldn't come here to do anything, so we had, yeah, they wanted to do that, that's where the grant writing travel. Right. Maybe, I do have a pondering plan, I'm prepared to share if if you did it at that point.
I appreciate that, but I guess what I'm really concerned about from from this side of the table level. I appreciate that, but I guess what I'm really concerned about from from this side of the table level is that um. A contract of that size, again, that that's kind of what I was referring to with. This three percent would bring us up to eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. We can't just agree to who's gonna come in and build that. That's something that would need to go out for that. And then and then the um. The contract itself having that built in language of adding. Or being up to three percent of the project. Would also put this. Contract itself in the category of needing RFP just to get this study done.
So I just want to make sure everyone understands that the page you're looking at, um, also Kenyon. That's what they have written. That's their wish. This contract is not with Velo. So this contract is with American Grant.
I know.
Of the study, so definitely not locked into Velo and all, especially for the RFP etc. So that's the that's.
Well, I I can appreciate that. So let me see if I can help. Make everyone understand what I'm getting at here. I feel like. I feel like a feasibility study needs to be done to see if. The whole idea is even. I mean, we need to talk about who's gonna be running the track, who's gonna be properly marketing sales and tickets for all the events. Who, you know, um. How's it gonna be paid for? Who's gonna be doing the insurance on? I mean, there's a whole list of. Things that feasibility studies being done would cover all those questions. To provide to us to even decide, do we want to move forward? With the project, at which point we would hire someone to design it and someone to build it. And we would follow all those appropriate steps, but. I I am very interested in the project idea. I just want to make sure we're going about it the right way and what I feel like. Would happen in this case, if we agreed to this. Been done before in this town, it's finally. Introducing something so easily. Without following all the right steps so that later we can say, well. You know, we paid nine thousand dollars for this thing to be done, so why wouldn't we now invest eight hundred thousand dollars without even? Knowing that, well, we already know, I already know, we do not have eight hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars. So the funding can't be found. It's not even.
I've been working closely with. There were a lot of concerns about. So the so expensive. They got one off the station to cover fifty percent of the funds. Pretty quick and then the rest of the funds came in a few years and then they almost didn't get it built because they didn't have a lot. So that was kind of our. For three years, it was the largest asphalt pump track on the West Coast.
Waterboard is next.
And with that, I've been working closely with Trevor to develop a fundraising plan. Start communication to the single holes to uh having a fundraising team. Contact uh business owners, industry companies for support, donation, sponsorship. There are a lot of local businesses that have already expressed interest. Wanted to help donate. We're almost there. Sit tight, we're working on wanting to do this right, so we're getting through the right steps.
So my question would be, does anyone does anyone here familiar with? Companies that do feasibility studies on. Outdoor adventurous projects.
Traveling County.
Do they do feasibility study?
They do a whole litany of things. I absolutely would.
It is an additional cost.
Right, so can we maybe just find out how much travel it kind of costs to do it?
Well, they I I mean, they probably have a partner, somebody they work with that they know how to, like if it's a. Side by side, they're gonna say contact this. If it's biking, they're gonna say they'll know, they'll know.
Okay.
I just wanted to say I I one hundred percent understand the path that Dawn's going down and I do agree with that. It after reading through it, yeah, it's the picture's so huge, but I like. Absolutely support you guys and want to see this happen really bad too. Um but I I know. The things she was mentioning to start triggering things in my mind that we need to know, so what can we do tonight? To express that we support a feasibility study and help you guys continue moving on and and progressing. What can we do?
Um I guess just knowing that you support us and maybe uh I guess have an official uh. Motion uh motion to approve the project idea.
Yeah, we could do that motion and then just defer it back to the Parks Committee to get some of this other stuff that's needed.
I actually would prefer to make a motion to direct our city administrator. To look into getting a feasibility study done on building a pump track for Oak Ridge. And then and that's the end of my motion, but I'll just add that it would. Having that done would give us the opportunity to vote on whether or not we wanted a. We want to pursue it.
And does it particularly lean to be an asphalt pump track or this pump track?
Ideally, yes, that would really help minimize maintenance. It would help it be used year round, basically. And it would also open up uh. Many of you could use and enjoy this track, not just bicycle, skateboard, scooters on your website. They talk about how they're a wheelchair. They have wheelchairs.
I hate to tie their hands as well, leave it as open as we can for now. Do I hear a second on Counselor Kenyon's motion? Once, twice. Motion dies lack of a second. Counselor Hollitt, do you have a motion?
I move to officially support the work. From Jason and Tom and the Parks and Rec Committee in. Working on an asphalt pump track and would like to direct our city administrator to work with this team. In research on a feasibility study.
Do you hear a second on that motion? All right, motion made by Counselor. I'll second by Counselor turn a discussion on that motion. Can you reduce that to writing for me, please?
I'm sorry, I was just trying to make it very official that we support the work as a team and then also to direct the. Work on feasibility study.
All right, so no other discussion. Um the motion was, and you can correct me, Counselor Hollitt.
Go ahead.
Was to have the asphalt team, asphalt pump track team. Work with the Parks Committee to go back. And with our city administrator. Look into obtaining a feasibility study. For the track, establishing a track in the Oak Ridge Industrial Park.
And also that it's official that we support them.
We are supportive. Of this team. How's that? That's we are supportive in front of it.
I agree.
We got that jacket. Okay, um.
Not all of it. I'm still writing. But go ahead.
You're okay with it?
Yeah.
You'll get it off the recording, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so um. Would you call for a vote on that motion?
Counselor Coker. I. Counselor Kenyon. Mayor Ketchum.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Thanks, guys.
I may just share really quick. Uh I have a little bit of information for a. Pre-game update on time you do.
No, sorry, I'm a little run a little shy at time. I'm sorry.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. You're appreciated.
All right, uh ten point five, which is revised. We are sharp cooling station proposal, James.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, we are certain uh revise their. Station. Based on Council's uh concern about last meeting. Change in the proposal include having at least one volunteer supervisor in cooling station all time. It only operate for up to two hours a day when it's ninety above. And only up to four hours a day when it's one hundred and above. So that's less time and higher degrees of which one. And they're willing to operate it. Either in the WAC parking lot, community garden, or in the police department, city hall, parking lot. Outside.
Okay. All right, um. Do I hear a motion?
I mean, I move we allow we are sharp to build, operate and supervise a cooling station. At the police. City Hall Parking Lot. For up to two hours a day when it's ninety degrees or above and for up to four hours a day when it's seven hundred degrees or above.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by Counselor Kenyon, second by Counselor Coker, uh discussion on this. Or questions of staff or of, thank you if she's online.
I was curious, looking at this selections for different locations. I mean, we have. A idea where the majority of. Are the people who would utilize this would be would be. If around this area or down in Atlantic City and land.
People move all over. Those kind of people are very changing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming the police. Deal with them and probably have an idea. The general location of where most of the.
Safety concerns in addition not to having a volunteer there all the time.
So safety concerns about having it at the police department parking lot.
No, I'm saying that that's why uh they have suggested. Less likely that parents would be committed in.
Yep.
And less likely that children would be lurking around when that could be followed.
Any other questions or discussion on this? All right, the motion was to allow the we are sharp to build, operate and supervise a cooling station at. City Hall slash Police Department Parking Lot for up to two hours a day when it is ninety degrees or above and for four hours a day when it is a hundred degrees or above.
I actually do have one comment. Sorry, I shouldn't mention it, but. I think we talked about at the last meeting how this would impact um the neighborhood of the WAC. And I am curious how this would impact the neighborhood and the businesses in the uptown area. City Hall particularly.
If only there'd be three houses.
I'd like to respond again. I think the. History at the WAC that you are well aware of is that when people were coming there for food or for the shelter that was there. Um especially during COVID. If you can stay in the area and someone's illness would. Make a lot of noise and it would disturb the neighborhood. Um my suspicion is that the police department parking lot would probably tend to avoid that ingredient. Just because of where this, they're not gonna want to be watched by. Feel like they're being watched by the police. Is my guess.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, Jack, could you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson. Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Mayor Ketchum.
No.
Counselor Charman.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Under ten point six, which is revised city council rules of procedure, change.
So we have to revise uh council rules. Procedure and then all of the city attorney on. Fix the rules. First discussion council needs to have is it. We want to probably city attorney advice and. Changes to the rules, we want to incorporate those into the changes. Process.
So. That's incorporated in your motion. So do you want to have a separate discussion or are we are we looking to have a motion and then and do a discussion on everything?
I don't have a preference.
Okay, so do I hear a motion on this thing?
Mayor, I would make a motion if I had a copy of one in front of me, but I don't. Is this the packet?
Yeah, I think there was one in each spot when we set up. There wasn't. Was this the paper?
Yes.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the changes to the Oak Ridge City Council Rules of Procedure agreed upon during the July thirteen. City Council Work Session and adopt a new. Twenty twenty three version of the rules to replace the old twenty twenty rules. And attachment A of ordinance nine thirty. I further move. That part of the suggested changes by the city attorney regarding. Many appointments also be incorporated in the twenty twenty two version of the rules. As discussed during this meeting.
Okay, a motion made by Counselor Kenyon. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hollitt. Uh discussion.
Yes. Uh the reason why I chose the use of the word part in that motion was was recommended we could do all or parts. Is because I have a suggestion um. In what the attorney sent us. There's, there's two sections here, chapter seven, appointments. Which is the first section is appointments of city staff, and I'd like to point out that his suggested words use the word may instead of shall. Says the mayor with council approval, approval, may appoint and can remove those positions, yada, yada, yada. But then in section two, it says unless otherwise, which is the appointments to boards and committees. Boards, commissions, and committees. It's almost the exact same verbiage, except it says the mayor shall appoint and can remove. I suggested that word shall be changed to may. And I would like to point out that in both of these, what the attorney did was he added a second. No, he didn't add it to. Actually, I'm not sure I really understand this very well, he added to the appointments of boards, commissions, and committees a section that says the city council upon the motion of any, any councillor also may appoint and can remove members of any board commissioner committee authorized by the council. Provided all appointments and removals require four affirmative votes from the council. So actually, that is at the top section also, section A, it's weird how they just don't line up A, B, and C. I think you caught this in some of your editing on a different section. I feel like section two was under number A should be just part of the appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. I know you caught this in another one. See how this is a title?
Mm-hmm.
And then it has a description.
Mm-hmm.
And that's number one, and then it moves to A, B, and C, here. This title, all this verbiage should go under that title, and then this becomes A, B, C. And then they would almost identically match.
We like James.
But also using the words may instead of shall, I think makes be them.
Well, if you change now to a may, I think that kind of goes back to giving the mayor an option. May.
But why would he may be able to appoint in a staff? And not in shall. And not in the boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. McNatt would like to make a comment, I don't know if the council feels, how they feel about taking public comment in the middle of this.
I'd love to take public comment, but maybe not right now.
Yeah.
We have to, anyway.
But.
Because it does require it, but not right now.
But soon. Does anybody else have any questions or responses to what I'm suggesting? Do you want me to show you what I'm talking about?
No, I'm looking at it.
Okay. Online?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right, oh, okay.
No, I don't, I don't have any questions, I find what's your proposal.
I think the point here is that he captured that the council well, what's odd to me is it in the appointments of staff, it basically says in the opening statement that that the mayor may do this with four affirmative votes of the council, down below. It also says mayor may do this with four affirmative votes of the council, but it also goes on to say that the councillor or the council can also make the motion to appoint anyone.
Whatever language ends up there, I believe it's virtually verbatim out of the charter, isn't it?
I think that's.
So, so it has to match whatever's in the charter, you don't want to go against the charter. The additional, the addition is what, what he's done is give you that additional paragraph, which allows you to work around from me, not appoint. And so you're, while, while I personally feel it violates the spirit of charter. I don't see anything illegal about it, and that's what you're trying to get at here. But the rest of the language should match exactly right out of the charter, because charter addresses both those things.
Well, then I have to make out my handy, handy copy of the charter and verify whether or not that word shall is. Well, in section nineteen, it says shall appoint the committees provided by the rules of council, so I feel like the rules of the council as long as we all agree to them can be worded.
But I just, I would hate to put something in writing is not exactly as it's stated in the charter, because that's exactly where your guidance is coming from. It's okay to have further guidance.
I'm going to look for a point that's on city staff, that's going to be different. Because that's where I'm saying the difference is in his proposal. Other officers of the city shall be a municipal judge, yes, administrator. Help somebody designate any appointed officers, but I have no sense on it.
Look at sections and chapter.
Yeah, that's what I just read, and it does say who the other officers are, and that the council gains them necessarily. But it doesn't say anything about whether or not the mayor may or shall. Oh, it's actually says, and may be removed at the pleasure of the mayor with consent of the council. Though the word may is used there, but also the word shall is in the same paragraph. So.
Yeah, that second sentence, each of these officers shall be appointed and may be moved at the pleasure of the municipal council.
And then, the the part that's particularly maybe more important is with consent of the council, so. Mayor, I'd like to suggest at this time that we take the public comment from our citizen that, yeah.
Please. Okay. Anyone else will do the public comment for this? Anyone else want to make a comment from the public on the Zoom platform or in the room? On council rules, procedure revision. Hey, nothing heard, any other councillors want to discuss, heard of? This?
I would only like to say that I would, I'd like to hear from the council whether or not they're in consensus on changing that word, or if their general thought is leave it the same, or maybe nobody's even interested in making any suggestions and all that, I don't know.
I would my opinion would be that we just ask, instead of putting the words on the document, we just ask the city administrator to make sure that those two paragraphs, as they're written, are aligned with the charters. And if they aren't, then change the may to shall, or change to whatever, whatever's required, make it so it doesn't conflict with the charter.
What do you think? I would agree with the mayor. That won't make things conflict. Yeah.
Would you like to restate?
So, yes, I go with all my motion. Are you picking one or the other? No, this is one section of the charter, and that's not charter. Council rules. So that's on appointing staff, staff, and this is on appointing committees. Okay, so I rescinded my motion, and I'd like to move that we approve the changes to the Oakbridge City Council Rules of Procedure agreed upon during the July thirteenth city council work session and adopt the new twenty twenty-three version of the rules to replace the old twenty twenty rules and attachment A of ordinance nine thirty. I further move that all of the suggested changes by the city attorney regarding committee appointments also be incorporated in the new twenty twenty-three version of the rules as we have discussed as long as a appropriately matched with our city charter.
All right, motion made by councillor Kenyon. Any seconds? Wait, you're a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded by councillor Jartson. Any further discussion on this? Or questions? Hearing that, I have one I think to make an amended motion. So I'd like to keep the motion as councillor Kenyon has stated it, but on the end say I move we amend the initial motion, add a statement to chapter two, section one. The mayor and city councillors will make every effort to attend city council meetings in person unless travel, medical, or extenuating circumstances make virtual attendance necessary. All right, motion was made by me, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Charman, any discussion? On the amended motion? On the Zoom or at the table?
I thought we discussed this pretty in depth in the work session.
We did, but I'm very committed to this, and I wanted to give us another chance to reconsider it.
How are we going to vote on this motion?
You either, you, you vote on the amended motion, so if you don't agree with the amendment, you would vote no, if you agree with it, you would vote yes. And then we'll see what the outcome is of that, and then at that point, we go back to councillor Kane's original motion and vote on that.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion on the amended, amended motion? Okay, Jackie, did you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Bjornson?
No.
Another guy.
Mayor Ketchin?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Nay.
Councillor Kenyon?
Nay.
Councillor Charman?
Aye.
Councillor Hallit?
Nay.
All right, motion fails for moving on to the original motion as articulated by councillor Kenyon, and that was moved to approve the changes to the Oakbridge City Council Rules of Procedure agreed upon during the July thirteenth city council work session and adopt new twenty twenty-three version of the rules to replace the old twenty twenty rules and attachment A of ordinance nine thirty. Further moves that all of the suggested changes by the city attorney regarding committee appointments also be incorporated in the twenty twenty-three version of the rules as discussed during the meeting, as long as they match the city charter. You okay with that councillor Kenyon? That's a mouthful. All right. Jackie, would you call for a vote on the original motion?
Councillor Hallit?
Aye.
Councillor Charman?
Trying to be a little. Aye.
Councillor Bjornson?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchin?
No.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to ten point seven. Which was the addition to the agenda. Which is potential appointing chief Kevin Martin pro temp CA for August four through seven, twenty twenty-three, James, and then add before we.
Now, you know, I shouldn't be available by phone, but I have a contingency, yes, I'm not.
Motion, please. I move to appoint Kevin Martin as the pro temp city administrator from August fourth through the seventh, if and when city administrator Clevinger cannot be reached by cellphone while he's out of state.
Wait, you're a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by councillor Hollis, seconded by councillor Coker. Discussion or questions of James? Or I, I just questioned him a little bit to do this, just because during the wild, with the wildfire going on, and I think it's important to have someone you can reach out and touch at this time. That physically, if they, if they have to go to the I N T headquarters or something like that, so I think it's great to have him there, and yeah, like he says, he can probably handle most of his job remotely. While he's in Chicago doing something. Any others? All right, the motion was to appoint Kevin Martin as a pro temp city administrator from August four through seven, if and when city administrator Clevinger cannot be reached by cellphone while he is out of state. Jackie, would you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Councillor Charman?
Aye.
Councillor Hallit?
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson?
Aye.
Councillor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Ketchin?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Motion passes. It's like Kevin knows he's on the hook.
I'm a timer too.
Yeah. We've got item eleven, which is executive session, and it's seven fifty, are you okay with proceeding on with the executive session, because it will likely eat up that ten minutes and a little bit more. So any councillors have a problem extending this, we'll start with thirty minute increments, so till twenty thirty, or eight thirty, sorry.
Are we coming back into public session afterwards?
Say that again, James?
I would say we do have a lot of business.
I know, I'm just.
The idea would be that we come back into public session. So if any councillors have a problem with an extension to eight thirty P M.
Well I have a feeling that it's going to be eight thirty, and we're going to be having to decide if we're going to want to go for another thirty minutes to come back in here and do the rest of the meeting. So shouldn't we be looking at adding an hour at this point, just to be safe, so that we don't have to?
Yeah, it was we can do that, if the council's okay with it, it's just, it's not in the rules, but we can do it that way for an hour.
Or, or, I would suggest adding two thirty minute sessions at this point.
Yep, that's okay, everybody all right for that? Okay, it's seven fifty-one, we are now going into executive session under O R S one nine two point six six zero two E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transaction. So James, I assume we're going back into the conference room, the council is, you're welcome to remain here in the room if you want, or not, and
Yes, so we're going to be very careful to make sure we stop the recording, not pause it, but stop the recording. And then we'll restart the recording. Turn off the TV, mute. That.